You're on the record.
Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 31st, and the time is 9:00 a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our open business meeting. We have all three commissioners with us. Two are virtual. Also in the room with us, we have, and we'll just go around, and we'll start with you, Beth.
Beth Mon, Treasurer.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Brad Smith, with the Assessors' Office.
Welcome, everyone. Looks like we have some changes to the agenda. And I will need a motion. Commissioner Lacheyondo, you ready for the motion to change the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to amend the agenda as identified above.
You have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, new business, and we're going to open the public hearing on Resolution 2503. And this is postponing planning and zoning commission and Ada County Board of Commissioners April public hearings in order to prevent further spread of the coronavirus to the public. So we are going to postpone that just for the month of April, and we will be revisiting that along the way. So I'll need a motion on that. Commissioner Lacheyondo?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the resolution number 2503 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
I can barely hear you, Rick. Can you second again?
Yes, second.
There you go, thank you. Give me your motion.
And I have all the motions present.
What's that?
I also have all the motions in front of me present, if you want me to read any.
Okay, great, super. Okay, so we have a motion.
Can you hear me better?
What's that?
Can you hear me better now?
A little bit, it's, yeah, still broken up a little bit. So we will close the public hearing on that, and we have a motion, and then, Rick, you seconded that? And then, all those in...
Yes, second.
Okay, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, licenses, and Commissioner Visser?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to ratify and approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including four license renewals signed by Commissioner Kenyon on March 25th, 2020, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. You have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. I can barely hear the ayes for the record. Okay, next up, Clerk's Office. Anyone here from the Clerk's Office? No report?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am on the phone. This is Katie Reed.
Hello.
That's okay. Just as a brief update for the board, we are working diligently over here at elections to try to get the all-absentee election going, and I appreciate all of the employees in the Clerk's Office helping us out. We've really scaled back, as you can see, in the empty courthouse. So just trying to get everyone healthy, staying healthy.
Great, so just to remind everyone that we're going ahead with the May primary as originally scheduled, and everything will be absentee. So you'll need to go online and get those requested. So we'll be working with Elizabeth and all the PIOs and maybe our joint information system on helping to get that link out to folks and remind folks that they'll need to do that. So that, it'll be an interesting election.
Yes, it will.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Visser?
Yes, I was wondering, has there been any discussion on the last, or the current policy, current law that allows voter registration on the day of the election?
Has there been anything?
I...
Did you hear that, Katie?
Yes, I did. Madam Chair, Commissioner Visser, I have not been involved in those conversations, but I could certainly get more information for you and get it to you on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Katie?
No, Madam Chair, that'll be it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to Claims Journal, and Commissioner Visser, I'll need a motion.
Certainly, Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated March 31st, 2020.
Second. You have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, I'll need a motion, Commissioner Visser, for personal action forms.
Certainly, Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel action forms as listed on the agenda, including three introductory period completion pay increases, one miscellaneous, three promotions, two reclassifications, and two salary increases, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, Assessors' Office. Morning, Brad, come on up.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. Just an update with the Assessors' Office. PTR apps were currently at 3,029, so we've gone past that 3,000. Compared to last year, we were about 2,600 applications at that point, so we're definitely trending above that. As far as our staff, we're currently, we still have about half of our employees that are actively working because of the DMV. Been able to transfer some of the DMV employees to help process homeowners exemption and PTR. Very helpful. Normally, a lot of these applications would not be processed until a couple months down the road, so it's been really helpful having, being able to cross-train and have those people work.
Any issues you'd like to share with us as we're having conversations probably this week with the Governor's Office and the Tax Commission on the BOE hearing dates? Any issues or problems with your folks being prepared for the date as is? I know folks are kind of confused because everything else has been kind of pushed a month, but the BOE has not.
Right, and that's a pretty complicated dates when you start messing with those. Right now, I talked to the appraisal division supervisor yesterday, and she does have concerns trying to get values prepared and stuff. They're working at home and working as hard as they can. I mean, we're shooting for the deadline to have assessment notices mailed out and to do BOE and everything as scheduled, but it is difficult trying to put the valuations on over 200,000 parcels at this point, especially working from home resources. But we're doing the best we can, and that's what we're shooting for. And we feel pretty comfortable at this point, but, and the exemptions are there too, so we have the homeowners exemptions, all exemptions due April 15th. So that's another concern, trying to process all that information. And when you push back that April 15th exemption deadline, there's a whole bunch of other things that come down.
Yeah, everything else would have to subsequently be pushed back.
So, yeah, that's a big, big change.
Well, if there are concerns that you have, if you want to just shoot me an email, we'll share those on our next call.
Okay.
Having weekly calls with the Governor's Office, and I know Ellen Dornfest and Tom Cassimides are working on this as well.
Perfect.
With us to make sure that we can accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Excellent.
Any questions for Brad? Yeah, Commissioner Lacheyondo?
Not so much a question as a comment. We don't yet know what's going to happen to the real estate market and home values as this thing progresses, but presumably, we might, we might potentially see a dip. And recognizing that the Assessors' Office has a responsibility to assess at-market value on January 1st, I think we just would, it would behoove us to get prepared with messaging about what those requirements are, because I'm definitely envisioning a scenario where we have a lot of upset, concerned homeowners when their notices come out in May.
Good point. And Brad?
I'm commenting to that. That's a great point, and we are going to be in a little bit of a dilemma, because we're going to be sending out assessment notices based on the January 1st lien date, and the market was very strong at that point. And we don't know what's happened at this point, but it's probably not having a positive impact. But we are working on doing a flyer that would be inserted with the assessment notice that would explain the impact of that, and if there is any impact, it would affect the 2021 assessment, and that, that way, we'll have time to react to that. But we're also going to try to put something out on our website that goes into detail on the lien date and the impact.
That's great.
I think that's actually something that the state could help us with messaging, so we might want to put that on our to-do list for the call at the Governor's Office.
Yeah, it's a good idea. All right, thank you. All right, moving along, need a motion, Commissioner Lacheyondo, for tax cancellations.
Okay, let's see here. Hold on a second.
Mr. Visser, you ready for the motion?
Yeah, I'm ready. Madam Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which include one tax cancellation for 2017, one tax cancellation for 2018, and 21 tax cancellations for 2019, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Great, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, Treasurer's Office. Good morning. How are you, Beth?
Good, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just to pick up where Brad left off, right around the same time that the assessment notices will be going out, our office does plan to be sending the second half reminder notices. So currently, and statutorily, the second half taxes are due June 20th. So as you speak with the Governor, I would request that, you know, discussions about potential extension of that due date, I mean, I'm not advocating for that, but in the event that's being considered, we definitely want to know so we could have our messaging correct if that statutory deadline is changed.
All right, and that is if it's just being considered, but you're not recommending it at this time?
I'm not recommending it.
I think you mentioned most of those are already tied in with their payments in escrow or type of...
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And then aside from the tax collections, in our treasurer capacity, we are still accepting deposits every day, so again, deposits from paramedics and from courts and the prosecutor. So we're depositing daily, we're balancing daily. Today's month end, so we're doing a lot of accounting, again, keeping our internal controls in place, even though we have a skeleton crew, but for the most part, we're here to...
As is usual for you, yeah, that's great.
Support the financial needs of all of our offices and departments.
Thank you, really appreciate that. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on then, thanks, really appreciate your update. Okay, approval of minutes, Commissioner Lacheyondo?
Okay, yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, weed and pest, and I'll need a motion, Commissioner Visser, on the releasing lien.
Madam Chair, I move to approve one release of lien for weed and pest as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the document on behalf of the board.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner Visser, I'll need another motion on the agreements, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the 11 agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate document on behalf of the board.
Second. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner Lacheyondo, Indigent Services. I'll need a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda, six final decisions for hearings from March 4th, 2020, as listed on Exhibit A, and that said, exhibits remain on file in the Commissioner's Office and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion on any of these items? Okay, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, procurement. Morning, Bob, how are you?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner's doing well this morning.
Let's...
We have one more.
Oh, miscellaneous. No, no, what do you have? I'm sorry.
Indigent. So I will go ahead and move the recommendations of indigent services as listed on the summary of cases.
Okay, whoops, we can't hear you. Commissioner Visser? We hear you, Commissioner Visser?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Lacheyondo, you're back on again. Can you call it, go ahead and make that motion again, please?
Yes.
No, we can't hear you. I'm going to go ahead...
Do you want me to take it?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Visser.
I move to accept the recommendations of indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated March 31st, 2020, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, you second that, Commissioner Lacheyondo? Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Delayed, but yes, it's there. Motion carries. All right, next up, procurement. Thanks for catching that.
One more, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, we have one more motion.
Okay, oh, we've got, all three of these are separate? Okay, they're all separate on Indigent today? Go ahead, thank you, Commissioner Visser.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the stipulations as identified on the agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. She's back up and running. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it. No, she carries. Now it's your turn.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Procurement has a couple items on the agenda this morning. The first is the opening of bid 2003 for the Ada County Courthouse Serving Room UPS and Transformer Replacement, and we received one response for this bid, and Madam Chair, with your approval, Evan will go ahead and go and seal the single response that we got.
Please, please.
All right. Madam Chair, if you could read for the record the name of the supplier and the bid amount.
Yes, the supplier, we have one, and it is Power Plus Inc., and the bid amount is... What do we have, 169,696? And zero cents.
Perfect.
Okay, okay. All right, would you like some time?
Yes, Madam Chair, the evaluation team will need some time to review the bid submitted, and we would request that this be tabled for award to April 7th, 2020, open business.
April?
April 7th.
Seven, seven, okay, okay. Commissioner Lacheyondo, can you make that motion?
Yes, I move to table the award of bid 20034, Ada County Courthouse UPS and Transformer to April 7th, 2020.
Commissioner Visser?
Broken up, are you hearing it okay?
Yep, can you second that?
Second.
All those in favor state aye.
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 As have it, motion carries. All right, all right. Next up, review of bids for our Public Works Project.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for our second item today, we have the review of bids received and award recommendation for Public Works Projects 50,000 to 200,000. The bid before you today is bid 20043 Expo Idaho Greenbelt Pathway 2020, but unfortunately, we did not receive any bids for this particular project. Procurement Operations and Parks and Waterways contacted three reputable asphalt contractors that the county has worked with in the past to submit bids, but none of them submitted. When we followed up with those contractors as to why they didn't submit a bid, one indicated they were too busy, the other started their bid but did not finish their bid in bonfire, and the other one simply did not get back to us.
So your recommendation then is to go into the open market? Commissioner Lacheyondo?
Just interested in the timing of whether they were too busy, if that may change.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So any discussion on this, and whether we want to go back out for a bid again or just go into the open market? No, I think the recommendation then would be the motion to go out on the open market. If you want to make that motion, Commissioner Lacheyondo?
Yes, Madam Chair, recommendation of the evaluation. That's echoey. Direct procure the bid on the open market.
Second.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. What we'd like to do is bring a resolution next week and for your consideration, and have it ready for you then.
Okay, okay. We'll be looking forward to the resolution. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll second that. All those, okay, as have it, motion carries. We don't know what happened. Where is she? There she is. All right, last but not least, we have miscellaneous. And we have emergency health pay directive extension to April 20th. Okay, Cassie, you want to speak to that, anything?
If you'd like me to.
Sure. More we can share with the public, the better. How are you this morning?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So we are requesting an extension for the family paid leave of the coronavirus. They're caring for someone who is exhibiting symptoms if they need to stay there for school closures, and, or if they've traveled and need to be quarantined. That's less and less of an issue as time goes by. The schools currently are closed until April 20th, so we're asking for this extension through April 20th. This is also allows us for easier administration of the Family First Act that was signed. That goes into effect tomorrow.
Oh, great, okay, super, thank you. Any questions for Cassie?
No.
Okay, thanks, we'll go ahead and take up a motion. Commissioner Visser? Thanks, Cassie.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to adopt the emergency health pay directive extension to April 20th, 2020.
Second. Give a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll go ahead and go into recess. And next up, emergency medical services. Hi.
Good morning.
What's going on? Takes a little bit to...
We're on the record?
All right, we're back on the record. Thanks, Brad. All right, good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, March 31st, and the time is 9:25. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our Emergency Medical Services District meeting. We have all three commissioners with us, two are virtual. Also in the room with us today, we have...
Steve Bointer, paramedics.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Welcome, everyone. Any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right, then, we'll take up new business. Commissioner Visser, can I get a motion for the Claims Journal, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair, I move to authorize the payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated March 31st, 2020 regarding EMS expenditures.
Second. You sure you don't want your son to second it, just for practice?
Say second?
Second.
All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. All right, Commissioner Visser, personal action forms, please, and lead a motion.
Certainly, Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel action form as listed on the agenda, which includes one leave with pay, five promotions, and 21 salary increases, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner Lacheyondo, I'll need a motion for approval of the minutes, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Give a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, we have an agreement 11812-4-20. This is renewal of an agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical District and North Ada County Fire and Rescue District for stationing and coordination of services. Anything you'd like to speak to?
This is specifically for NACF first Station 18 that's there on Chenden. We currently house a crew there 12 hours a day, most days of the week, 24 on Friday, and now we're running one of our COVID response vehicles out of there as well. And so it just allows us to continue to be in a very strategically important location that can serve Garden City and also quickly get to the busy parts of downtown as well. And so they've been wonderful taking care of the station and taking care of our crews, and so we're really happy with the location and the service we're getting from them.
Great, okay. All right, I'll go ahead then and take up a motion on that. Commissioner Visser?
Madam Chair, I move to approve agreement number 11812-4-20 as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate document on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. All right, Steve, you want to give us an update, how you guys are holding up?
Yeah, how we're doing. First, I wanted to thank Justin Rainey, who's in the audience today. He has agreed to be my partner for the day, and so he's training me on how to work on an ambulance in times of this increased level of PPE and awareness on a call. It really changes the way our people do everything. It slows it down, it eliminates a lot of the stuff they can normally do for folks. And by that, I mean, one of the things we spend a lot of time doing is emotional comfort, putting a hand, you know, holding somebody's hand, putting an arm around someone, getting close to family members, and the medicine's really important to us, but we really are a social agency as well. And so putting that PP on separates our people from being able to do some of the most important work that they do. And so we're just adjusting to that.
Yeah, I bet that is tough.
It is. Call volume is down a little bit for us the last 14 days, not significantly, but we are running volumes below normal, which is a good thing. I think sort of optional trips to the ER seem like a really bad idea right now, whereas in the past, maybe that was a good option, but people are aware of what's going on. Since we...
So you're finding people are just self-regulating?
I don't want to overstate it, but yeah, it does seem like that's the case. And with all of the hotlines and the information that's available, even though it is confusing, it does give people who are interested in controlling their own decision-making process access to what information they need to make those decisions. And so normally, if you call a nurse triage line, the answer is call 911, you need to come to the hospital. Now, these triage lines are walking them through their symptoms, telling them you probably wouldn't be tested anyways, there's no need to come in, and so perhaps that's impacting us. But we really, in EMS, are just starting to see the first really sick people in the community. The hospitals have seen that for a while, we're starting to see that since Saturday, Sunday, we're starting to see how quickly people go from well to significantly unwell across a relatively wide range of ages.
And is that a 24-hour period, or what are you finding?
You know, our ER doc and our personal physician tends to say it's kind of a second wave effect. The first seven days, you have a COVID or a Corona-like illness, but when you get to seven to 10 days, you start to get into a SARS-type of respiratory distress, and the difference being upper versus the lower respiratory, and that's when they're seeing people get really sick. But what we've noticed, and it's very anecdotal at this point, but it's consistent with what other areas are telling us, is they're doing well, they're doing the well, they're doing well, and if they do develop kind of the second phase, they go down relatively rapidly. It gets severe really quick. And so now, we're starting to take care of that level of patients. It's helping reinforce the message of PPE. If you can, don't do those procedures that do expose you to a much higher level of risk. And so it's just starting for us. But we're doing good on staffing, we're losing about seven people a day. That's not that out of the ordinary. We have suspended vacation because we need people, and that will offset us for a while. We are prepared to, we have 13 individuals identified, and Cassie's been working with us to get them ready to step into a temporary part-time role, and we're very lucky, we have a group of reserves who are... And we're very lucky, we have a group of reserves who are basically volunteers that we can spin up relatively quickly. We've got a group of supervisors who are ready to step up into a supervisor position should that group of people be impacted. And we feel like we're ready for the next step. We also, last Thursday, did deploy those co-staffing units with Boise Fire and Meridian Fire, so we have a non-transport unit that's responding to high likelihood it's COVID-related, low likelihood it's a transport. And so it's the lower acuity sick calls that traditionally have a relatively low transport rate, but we're still kind of just working through dispatch protocols and how we get them on the appropriate call. But right now, you have your paramedics riding with a Boise fireman and on a Meridian brush truck.
Little thought.
It's revolutionary. It would have taken us seven, eight years to get here, and we're doing it now with the idea of it's probably before the peak hits, but getting those bugs worked out, getting those dispatch protocols refined while we're still not overburdened, so that when we do need them, that they're ready to go.
How's the morale with your employees?
Our employees are both inspired, because this is what they signed up to do, and scared. And it really varies hour by hour, you know? And so we are doing everything we can to just remind them that we believe we're taking all the precautions necessary to make all of those contacts low-risk. But the reality is, it's hard to go home.
Yeah.
That's the hard part. Like, being at work, I think they understand it, they have the PPs, but the idea that we're asking our people to go home and potentially take it home is hard. But, you know, for now, all of the people we've had tested by Dr. Hillvers have gotten the exposure privately, at home or through a friend. We haven't had a, haven't had yet a case where it was an on-the-job exposure that required testing. So it's just something that we're being mindful of. We're doing daily communications with them, a daily Zoom meeting, a call-in, where they can ask questions and express concerns, and we'll address those in a later communication that goes out to the whole department. So, but it is, it's scary, and they're professionals, and they're doing a tremendous job.
So I believe Steve Rutherford reached out probably yesterday to you to put together that three decision plan.
Yes, yep, yep.
Which will really help for all of us to take a more holistic view of what those needs could be.
Yeah.
So we'll be walking through that with you.
Yeah, and, you know, so far, we're ready for the financial impact. We've been very fiscally conservative over the last five to seven years. We've always said there could be a day when an emergency happens, and we always wondered what that would look like, and we did not guess this. We did not guess this. So-
Do you have questions? Let's make sure. Commissioner Lacheyondo? Hello there. Do you have any questions at this time, or Commissioner Visser, either one?
I put myself on the-
No, I just want to say-
Background noise.
Hey, Commissioner Visser?
At this time, I don't have any questions, but Steve, thank you for that update and certainly pass along our gratitude and our prayers for all your staff and employees and their dedicated work.
Thanks, Rick. And am I correct that this will be your last open business meeting?
Yep, yep. So anything you'd like to say, Commissioner Visser?
I just want to say, Rick, from our perspective, Commissioner Visser has spent a lot of time with our field crews, going out and meeting them at football games, and we're gonna miss you. I know our people have appreciated you coming by and saying hi and sharing your weird stories with them. And you've brought them a lot of joy to kind of just get to know you. And you've always been a very big supporter of me personally, and I wish you the best of luck with what comes next for you. But it has made an impact on our people when you showed up and literally took the time to get to know their personal stories. That went a long way for them, and we appreciate you.
Well, Steve, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and I enjoyed it. And seeing them not just at football games, but seeing them at parades, doing the Roby Creek Run. I had those opportunities, and I'm glad I took every one of them because you have so many outstanding workers there. It's a weird setting to retire when we're isolated and stay at home like this, but that's something out of my control. Like, who all is on board today for the meeting? It was an honor to work with you, and I appreciate your extra effort at this time, the Commissioners Canyon and Lacheyondo. You're doing an outstanding job during this coronavirus epidemic, and I admire the extra effort that both of you are putting forth. And I'm here on the sidelines if I need to comment at any time, but today's my last day, so, so long.
Thank you, Rick. It is strange to have, you know, just your voice here, and I know you've been out, and then you come back in at a time where, you know, we're a skeletal crew down here and running 1,000 miles an hour. But we definitely, I wish you best in your retirement, and it's been a pleasure working with you this past year. So I'm assuming you're going to be with us the rest of the day, though, correct? So we'll have time to have more conversations as the day goes on, we've got a few other meetings?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All right, hearing done, we'll go ahead and go into recess, and we'll let Steve get back on the ambulance and do his training.
You're on the record?
Right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 31st, and the time is 9:40 a.m. The Board of County Commissioners is sitting as the Board of Equalization, and we have apparently no business on that agenda this morning, so we're going to go ahead and close that meeting. And then hang tight, Commissioners, and we're going to reopen a meeting for the exemption hearings.
Okay, you're off the record in BOE.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have that agenda, and I also have the motions present.
Yeah, we're going to go back in on the record just a second, Rick, for the exemption hearings.
Right.
For exemption hearings?
Yeah, thank you. All right, good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, March 31st, time is 9:40 a.m., and the Board of County Commissioners is sitting as the Board of Equalization for our exemption hearings. We have all three Commissioners with us today, and two are virtual, and there's no one in the room with us. Any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right, Commissioner Visser?
I apologize, there are.
Oh, wait, there's a change in the agenda. And?
I have that.
Okay, Commissioner Visser, we'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the correction to the February 26th, 2020 exemption hearing agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, new business, and I'll need a motion, Commissioner Visser?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the 268 short-form applications for 100% exemption, the five short-form applications for a partial percentage exemption, the four long-form applications for 100% exemption as identified via agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Say aye?
Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Commissioner Lacheyondo, would you two like to make a motion to go into recess?
You say I make a motion to go into recess? No? No? Okay. You will move to go into recess. Julian thinks that means we're going to go play basketball, so.
All right, we'll go into recess, thank you. Thanks, everyone, we'll go back upstairs for legal.
You're off the record.